Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Come on in, guys. Welcome to the June 5th Board of Trustees meeting. Can we please stand for the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
So this evening, we are going to begin by celebrating Tuckahoe Boys Varsity Baseball Team, who just won the Regional Championship. Just two days ago, I got a call, so very excited. So I want to ask, I'm going to ask trustees Gachion and Taylor to join me. So I, oof, this is loud. I received a call from the, come on this side, from Andrew, who is the, help me, my brain fog. The athletic director for the Tuckahoe Schools. And he texted me and said, "The boys varsity team just won, and it's the first time since 2011 they're going to the state." So let's just give them a big round of applause. This doesn't just happen by chance. And so we want to acknowledge our athletes and our students in Tuckahoe with certificates. And so when I call your name, if you would come up, please. Michael Ananziata. And the certificate reads, "For your perseverance and excellence resulting in the 2023 Varsity Regional Championship win for the first time since 2011." How do you feel? Connor Benke. John Benke. Connor Bryce. Jax Colachico. Brendan Fleming. Congratulations. Jacob Liber- My mic, oh. Frank Loyacano, or is it Loyacono? Aiden Lynch. Jake Matarazzo. Jay Romeo. John Silvestri. Sally Sinanage. And Jackson Snyder. Last but not least. So let's all give them a round of applause. Let's get some pictures here with them. Let me get the coaches. But this work does not happen by chance, and it takes leaderships, and it takes good coaches, and the support of the community in the school. So I want to thank Phil Treglia, one of the coaches, and Justin Bruckall. Come on up here. So it's for your, we're presenting you with a certificate and recognition for your steadfast leadership that paved the way for the varsity baseball team's first Regional Championship since 2011. Thank you very much. So let's take some pictures really quick. So I'm sure you guys want to, I was going to let you speak, yep.
Thank you for having us here today. Thank you for recognizing us. And thank you for always working with our school system to lead the way, village, community, environment, and school system, working together, to have these young people and all the young people in Tuckahoe Schools achieve all the greatness that's out there for them to achieve. So we wanted a heartfelt thank you to everybody, and we appreciate it. And we appreciate you coming the other day after the game and giving us high fives and meeting us at the school. It was a lot of fun. I know the boys loved it, too. So we just want to say thanks again, and go Tigers.
So don't leave yet. If anyone on the team would like to say a few words, or? I think they've chosen a representative. I think they've chosen a representative.
Thank you, thank you for having us. Really appreciate it. You know, I think I could speak on behalf of all of, you know, my friends and teammates that really did not know how the season was going to go after the beginning. You know, it was a rough start. But I really think that chose a lot about the character of Tuckahoe. You know, a small school, kids that, you know, are not going to be on the front page of Lo-Hut every day, but just keep on coming to practice and working hard and really never giving up. And I think that's really why we're here. And we really appreciate being recognized, and hopefully we can bring it home. So thank you.
Yeah. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to offer some words of congratulations? This is a big moment for the boys. Or anyone on Zoom? No? Okay. Congratulations, guys. We'll see you back. Oh, hold on, sorry. Trustee Taylor would like to address you.
Really quick, gentlemen. First of all, congratulations to all you guys. We're hoping that you take it all the way to Regionals and States. And I'm very proud of all of you. And there's at least, I'm sure, three or four of you that I had the pleasure of coaching in football. And you guys were awesome back then, and you're doing a tremendous job. Really proud of you guys. All right, let's go Tigers.
That's great. So we'll let them take care. So we do not have this on the agenda, but the next thing that we will have is a presentation. Oh, sorry, we didn't do roll call. I'm too excited about the championships. So.
Present.
Present. I'm glad somebody around here is paying attention. Can I ask Samantha Christian to come up and do a presentation on the Juneteenth Committee's event?
Hello, everyone. I'm Sam from the Juneteenth Committee. And I would just like to, the Juneteenth celebration is coming up in less than two weeks, June 17th, Saturday at noon. But I would like to give you a preface of why Juneteenth is so important. So Juneteenth really marks the beginning of the complete end of slavery in the United States. A lot of people say, "Oh, it's just a black holiday or an African-American holiday." No, it's a true American holiday. It ended slavery for everyone and paved the way so that when future immigrants came here to become American citizens, that they weren't enslaved and taken advantage of in the same manner. And so it didn't just happen. We had to fight for it. And a lot of people, all Americans, came together, white, black, Asian, native, all came together with the united goal and purpose of making sure that all of us as Americans had freedom and that we could not be enslaved or even seen as slaves, but as people with inherent rights and freedoms that we are entitled to. And part of the history that often gets ignored is slavery isn't just physical. It's not just the chains. And it's also mental slavery as well. Slavery wouldn't have been as rampant without the mental slavery that went along with it. And that brings me to this book, Black Free Thinkers. It is the only book of its kind that talks about how free thinkers in the black community have fought slavery throughout all of history. And so there's one part of it that I'd like to read for you about the part of the mental enslavement that made slavery persist. Even the mental enslavement persists to this day with us as descendants. So dating back to the 1700s, northern ministers such as Cotton Martar had argued that Christianity would actually make slaves more pliable and less likely to resist their bondage. In his 1706 book, The Negro Christianized, for example, he assured the masters, "Your servants will be better servants for being made Christian servants." And he was right. Christianity was actually a large part of the mental enslavement, and it still persists, unfortunately, throughout so many people. Because why would you fight the horrible things happening to you if you believed that there was a God who would free you? Why would you fight your slave masters, your oppressors, if you thought that prayer could save you? Why would you not recognize your own power to unite and come together when you think that a God has all the power? And it worked. And as Christine Herrman argues, the spread of evangelical Protestantism to the South after the American Revolution depended on Methodist and Baptist acceptance of eventual defense of slavery. And that is why so many people who still have the mental slavery are Baptists and Methodists to this day. So I think in terms of freedom, we really need to not just pay attention to the physical enslavement, but the mental enslavement that just because we can't see the chains up here doesn't mean that they aren't there.
Thank you.
I would like to, now, Christianity is the big mental enslavement, but there are also mental enslavements we're carrying with us, like gender roles, or you're not beautiful enough, or you're not worthy, and so many forms of mental enslavement that continue to impact us all. And we can't have a hard time overcoming. So I want everybody for this Juneteenth and every day of our lives to not only celebrate Juneteenth and how much fascinating artwork, music, fashion, food, and movies came from the freedom of that event, but also recognize that we still have some mental enslavements happening in that, just like with Juneteenth before, how we all banded together, whatever races or backgrounds we came from, we all united to make the physical enslavement end. We can do the same thing by uniting together and making the mental enslavement end. Thank you.
Thank you, Samantha. Can you tell the community a little bit about the Juneteenth Day Event? When it's happening, time? Give some more information.
I hope all you guys come. I should say when you guys come, everybody. It will be on Saturday on June 17th, starting at noon. And we have a whole bunch of events and celebrations. And you can actually feel how much the freedom has impacted the creation of so much art and music and dance and food and fashion while you're there. So of course, we have all these events, but each event and celebration means something. So when you're there, really process it and recognize how important freedom is to all of us.
Thank you.
Main Street.
It will be held at Main Street Park.
Any questions from the board?
Now, can I make a quick comment?
Sure.
Thank you. Sam, excellent, perfect. Thank you. I want to thank Sam, I want to thank Adrian Michelle, and I want to thank especially Deputy Mayor Cronin. You'll probably talk about it, so I don't want to steal anything from you. But none of these things would happen without money donations and sweat equity. They are a 501(c)(3) now, thanks to Deputy Mayor and to Adrian and all their hard work. So donate, donate, donate. Just Google Tuckahoe Juneteenth Committee, donate.
Thank you. Okay. So I got a chance to meet Max, who will be coming forward now, you can come forward, to do a presentation. He's the deputy chief, right? My brain is starting to work a little bit. The deputy chief of the Eastchester Volunteer Ambulance Corporation? Is it the ambulance corporation? Or just a cor-? All right, look at that, two for two. And so we make a small donation to evac, and the deputy mayor and I got a chance to go and deliver the check to evac, and we got a chance to meet with Max. And he gave us a lot of really good information that gave me food for thought about the kind of support that evac really needs. And I think that sometimes people have the impression that they are part of the tax base and that they're getting, you know, money the way the police department or DPW get paid, and they do not. So I asked him if he would be kind enough to come and educate the community so that we could support you better, because I am committed to doing that. You guys are, you provide a tremendous service, and I barely ever hear a peep out of you. You don't ask for anything. You don't complain about anything. And so I want you to know from this entire board how much we really appreciate the service that you provide, not just to Eastchester, Tuckahoe, and Bronxville, but surrounding communities like Scarsdale. So I'll let you take it from there.
Thank you very much for having me, Mayor. Yeah, I'm here to talk about evac as well as how we operate, what makes us a little different from other agencies, how our village benefits from it, and how we should be aware of some operational differences than what most people thought was going on. Eastchester Volunteer Ambulance Corps is a combination department. It has 150 volunteers and supplemental paid staff. What that means is we ride four ambulances and three SUVs. We employ a paid staff of three people a day, yet we staff between 12 and 14 bodies a shift. So that is obviously predominantly volunteer and done by our surrounding community members. So Eastchester, Bronxville, Tuckahoe, and a little bit beyond. We're very blessed to have such a dedicated volunteer base, and it's allowed us to operate as long as we have. With over 70 years of experience in our great municipality. We started off with a very modest call volume, and now we're at 3,400 a year. When I first started, we were ranging between 1,800 and 2,200 calls a year. And now the 3,400 mark is quickly growing beyond that for this year. 3,400 was 2022. Little bit of a knowledge on how we work financially. We are very, very reliant on our mailers. We send out mailers twice a year. Yes, we use snail mail. And requesting for donations. A lot of people don't know that that request is not in addition to their taxes. We, usually on a mailer, we take about, take in about $35,000, which we are extremely, extremely grateful for. But as you can imagine, operating four ambulances and three SUVs and a whole building, and $3,500 does not necessarily cut it. As far as our other sources of income, we operate via medical billing. So when you are transported, we bill X amount, which I might add is lower than the average amounts of FDNY EMS, for example. They just went from $900 to $1,300 per transport. We're sitting between $500 and $800. And that really isn't dependent on the medications given or the services provided. So obviously, we have to bill for expenses.
I'm just wondering, what's the reimbursement rate on the medical billing?
So some years are better than others, just like the ebbs and flows of the 911 system. So is medical billing. A good top out would be 62%. So there's a lot unpaid and unfulfilled, but we are not for profit. We're not in it for money. But we do look to be in our district for as long as possible. And as we're growing into an aging headquarters and increased expenses are happening, it does become a point of concern. We had a, you know, we're very appreciative of all the money we get. But last year, for example, although we're nonprofit, at the end of the year, we were net revenue of $2,300. We need about $5 million for new buildings, so it might be a few years before we get there. As far as education is concerned, which I think that's a big point for a lot of people to understand, not only are we not a part of the tax district and we're not sending people to an academy or anything of that sort, we are willfully, through our volunteer capacity, training our members to become EMTs and great first responders so that they can better serve their community. So this is where I plug. If you're 17 years old or older and want to become a volunteer, you can just go to our website, We'll provide you with CPR instructions and get you a CPR card, and then teach you further how to further dedicate your time to the community and render aid.
So typically, what is required to become an EMS? I mean, a volunteer.
Yeah, so like all volunteers, we're extremely grateful for having you just even darken our door. So our requirement is to be, pass a medical exam through your PCP, and then getting your CPR card, which we can aid you in doing so. And then when you come in, you go through your orientation and continued training throughout your time at evac. And then we also assist you in your scheduling and getting your uniform all set up. We make it very easy to get adjusted, understanding that, yes, we are in a 911 system and there's enough stress on the job as it is. You don't have to stress about, you know, becoming a member and getting properly orientated. So we're definitely, we're looking for more volunteers and also looking for more donations. But the biggest thing that I could get away, if I could say anything tonight, was, hey, thank you for all your continued support. And I just hope people understand that we are not a part of a tax district. We rely on your donations to stay here and continue giving you the best possible care. I will also note before I leave that if you've been reading at all, there's been issues in EMS as far as staffing is concerned in New York and the surrounding area. It's a national shortage. It is a serious point of concern, something that we take to heart. We did 3,400 calls last year. We fulfilled 98% of them. We had 68 calls that we were not able to fulfill, and that was only because we had out, had more calls than our resources. So we had to ask for a surrounding agency, let's say Scarsdale, to come in and cover that call while we were at the hospital or doing a transport. So that's something that we are extremely proud of, and we hope to continue that trend.
That's great. Thanks so much, Max. Are there any questions from the board?
I'm curious, why are the calls growing?
Oh, it's the beautiful thing. Well, we have, we have great modern medicine. So we have the increased age in the population as well as new apartment buildings and more, families are having more children. So our general population in the area is growing as well as our commercial traffic. So remember, we have, let's say, X amount, let's say 47,000 between Eastchester, Bronxville, and Tuckahoe people. That doesn't mean we have 47,000 people in town at one time. We have often much, much more. Even though we used to be predominantly commuter towns, that is no longer the case anymore. It's a lot of work from home and stuff like that. So it does jump our call volume a fair amount. As COVID restrictions ended and people went back to normal operation, our call volume just boom, skyrocketed. That was expected because that's been changing nationwide. Like, it's a problem, it's not a unique problem to Tuckahoe, but it is a problem that we do need to address and handle appropriately.
Yeah, and the population is growing. We were 6,600 people in the last census. This census, 7,100 almost.
That's significant percentage change.
I have a question. If someone wanted to volunteer, what kind of time commitment would they be looking at?
Fantastic question. Great question. So we ask for your volunteer. We ask for 24 hours a month. That is a low number, but we will not turn you away if you do 16 hours a month. The only thing I say is, the more time you put in, the more comfortable and versed you get in becoming part of Eastchester Volunteer Ambulance Corps. I, in my formative years, I was doing anywhere between 40 and 60 hours a month or more. But I'm, no one has to do that. No one has to be like that. You just have to be willing to learn and dedicated to your community.
And you're open to flexibility in terms of time?
Of course, of course. And we assist you in scheduling. We have a scheduling program so that you don't forget and that we can work with you. It's very flexible. You are volunteer, and you are appreciated when you're there.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Real quick.
Any other questions?
Max, if everything stays the same, the amount of money you get, the volunteers that you have, the hours they're putting in, that kind of a thing. Paint us a picture. What does that look like for Eastchester Volunteer EMS?
So, great question. For the next couple of years, it paints us a picture of just exactly the same status quo. But as our headquarters starts aging, as our equipment starts aging, as general expenses for medical supplies start increasing, that $2,000 margin that we had in net revenue last year quickly is gone, and then we're losing money. We have, you know, a great board, and we have great officers in charge of our agency, and we're very proud of it. But I would love to see us finding some way to have an emergency fund and have the ability to expand without thinking, hey, we're going to have to, you know, cut costs somewhere or reduce staffing somewhere and further jeopardize the community. Our goal is to grow, to be the standard in the area, and not the status quo, so.
Anyone else? Does anyone in the community have a question for Max? I think it was, you know, you really gave a comprehensive picture of what this looks like. If I could just put you on the spot, Max. You can also find your future, you know, partner there. You can get married if you go to evac, as Max did.
It is true.
Right, Max?
Yeah.
So you never know.
Full disclosure, I met my wife there, and my wife's sister met her husband there. So, hey, it's like a dating site.
So hey, hey.
But I will say, without talking about the dating site, we do have a website, There is no dating profile questionnaire on that website, but there is ability to donate there. So you can click to donate. If you have any questions, you can email me personally, mgoldberg, G-O-L-D-B-E-R-G, at eastchesterems.com, and I'll happily answer it. If you want to know a little bit about what we do in a casual platform for maybe the Tuckahoe Tigers that love social media, we have @eastchesterems on all social media platforms, and it really highlights what we do for the community.
Thanks so much, Max, for coming.
Of course, thank you for having me.
We have a question.
Yep. Yes, I can give you several platforms now, and I'll also work with the mayor to further make that accessible.
So what we can do, Max, you can let John type it into the chat. And Suzanne, if you look in the chat, John will put it there, and then you can use that website.
So John, that will be www.eastchesterems.com.
Thank you, Suzanne, for being the first to donate $10,000.
Oh, wow, so kind, thank you. I appreciate you. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. You unfortunately will see my face on all Village Hall Zooms. You unfortunately will see my face on all Village Hall Zooms. So I apologize for that in advance.
You can't see the speaker on the screen?
Don't worry about it.
It is on there, I think. But if you want, I could send you his picture.
Just think of a shorter Andy Samberg and you'll be good.
So, yeah, so he is there, but he's also on Channel Seventy-Five. If you want to jump on really quick before he leaves, he's also there, so. Well, thanks so much, Max.
Thank you so much for having me.
And I just want to encourage the community, I know we've said it a million times, to support evac as best you can and help them to continue helping us. So thanks a lot, Max.
All right, take care, guys.
Okay, so next on the agenda, we will have our superintendent come forward to give us our annual MS4 report on the DPW.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. I tell you all the amenities that evac has to offer. I put my application in. My presentation here tonight is about our MS4 application to New York State every year. And what that MS4 means is municipal stormwater report to New York State. And what they're looking for is to make sure that we're doing everything we can to make sure our waterways are free and clear of any contaminants, spills, illicit discharge. Our waterway is the Bronx River. So when it rains, that rainwater has to go somewhere. Where does it go? It goes to the metal catch basins that are along your curbside on every road. And it has all these, these inlets have a series of channels that go through a Bronx River. There are seven outfalls. So the series of channels, at the end of that channel, is called an outfall, and that's where it spews onto the Bronx River. So that's what the catch basins do. They catch the rainwater, and they're not sanitary. So let's make something really clear. We have two channels of piping that go through the village. It's a sanitary sewers and the rainwater, stormwater. So the two can't meet. Sanitary sewers go to Yonkers, and the rainwater goes to our waterways. So at these catch basins, you have labels that have an identification number on them, identifying each catch basin. And we're presently mapping each outfall and each catch basin. So what that is, is that if there's ever a spill on catch basin number, say, one hundred, we know what outfall at the Bronx River we could protect before any contaminants. It could be an oil spill, a paint spill, it could be any type of spill. So we're doing everything we can to protect our waterway. Illicit discharge could be oil, paint, toxic chemicals, animal waste. It could be dog waste. So with that said, is that we're doing everything we can, and this municipal report is presented to New York State every year. It's my requirement to make sure that everybody in the village understands what those catch basins do, where our rainwater goes to, and everything we're possibly doing to protect our waterway. So with that said, you know, everybody could view our MS4 report. I think we have them on for the past ten years on our website. And if anybody has any questions or anybody knows of anybody that is illicit discharging into our waterways, I ask that you please call me, and I'll make sure that it's all taken care of. Any questions?
Does the board have any questions? Thanks so much.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so this will take us to the adoption of the minutes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the May first, 2023 meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And we now are at the first opportunity to address the board on any agenda items. So if you have the agenda in front of you and there is an item that you would like to address the board on, now is the time. Anybody in the in-person audience? Anyone on Zoom would like to address the board on an agenda item? Okay. So we'll move on to resolutions. And the first resolution, the first few resolutions are fun days. So may I have a motion authorizing the use of the Main Street Park on Saturday, June seventeenth, for the annual Juneteenth celebration?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Second resolution, may I have a motion authorizing the Gifford Street Block Party on Saturday, June seventeenth, with a rain date of June twenty-fourth?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? David, that's the one you're invited to. Gifford Block Party. Just that one. May I have a motion authorizing the Lake Avenue Block Party on Sunday, June twenty-fifth?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? It's that time of year in Tocco, we love to party here. Number, Resolution Number Four, authorizing the creation of a Village of Tocco Safety Committee to ensure the safety of employees and the public consistent with the NYMIR Safety Committee playbook. David, can you talk a little bit about that?
Sure. So this is, just so everyone knows, this is a voluntary program. Municipalities aren't required to have a safety committee, but this is something that actually John Sullivan's going to lead up. Basically, what we're gonna do is once every quarter, kind of get together with Police Department, DPW, some other representatives, and just go over any accidents that we have in the village, any claims that were put in, any workers' compensation claims. Just kind of do a quick review, saying that what can we do better? How can we keep claims down? Anything from, you know, accidents of our employees to accidents that happen in the village. I mean, it can even just be roadways or anything like that, just kind of going through all that. So we want to do that kind of once a quarter. At least this puts it on the books of what we're looking to do. We invite our insurance carriers to come and representatives to come. Probably looking to just do it each quarter, probably a different location throughout the village. So when the insurance companies do come here, they can give us kind of recommendations of things that we can kind of do better. It's always nice to have another set of eyes. And, you know, at the end of the day, when we do go out for insurance renewals, this is going to assist us.
And just so the public knows, the NYMIR is the New York Municipal Insurance Reciprocal. Okay, may I have a motion authorizing the creation of this committee?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Resolution Number Five, authorizing an update to the village's sexual harassment prevention and reporting policy. So we are taking a look at our policies and procedures and updating to make sure that we have the most current policies. May I have a motion?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And Resolution Number Six, authorizing the village to enter into a membership plan agreement with the Workers' Compensation Alliance pursuant to subdivision three A of Section Fifty of the Workers' Compensation Law. David maybe gave a little brief summary. He's like, I know it's coming.
Yeah.
Summary on that.
Just some technical stuff. But basically, this is just entering it into an insurance agreement with a different carrier. For the past couple of years, probably three or four years, we've been with a company called Perma. We went out and shopped at last year, and a different company came in at a better pricing. Basically, three companies, two companies in the state is the kind of the backup if those companies don't want to insure us. But we did get good pricing from the Workers' Comp Alliance this year. I've worked with them in the past. They've been in the municipality in the past, and they're a really good company. I was actually just at a conference and kind of going through with some of the representatives there. And we're gonna have them come in the next couple of weeks and take a tour of the facility and see what we can do better. So that'll be kind of the kickstart of our safety committee. But yep, so this is just a new workers' comp carrier.
Thank you. And Resolution Number Seven, we have a new, sorry? Oh, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, Camille. May I have a motion authorizing a display contract with Special FX Wizard for the annual Tocco fireworks on July eighth that everyone looks forward to? This is a new company that we're using for this year, so may I have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? May I have a motion authorizing the approval of vouchers to pay bills in the amount of two-hundred-and-nineteen-thousand, seven-hundred-six dollars and ninety-one cents?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, and so I will take us to departmental reports. And I see the chief is not here, but our very capable Lieutenant Rhoda is, so I'm assuming you have a report.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Okay, so it's been a busy month for the Tocco Police. Start off, this past Saturday, we held our annual Bike Day. Every year, we have a nice celebration in the Main Street Park. We give out bikes, raffles, we do a bicycle safety inspection. We do a little course for the kids to go around in, and we also do some car seat installations. It's a great community outreach program, and it was well-attended, and people look forward to it every year, so it's a nice event.
How many?
How many bikes did we give out again?
Eight bikes.
Eight bikes.
June fourteenth is Flag Day this year at the American Legion Post nine-seven-nine on Bell Road. The TPD will be there as always, standing by our veterans to support them. There's gonna be a short ceremony. It starts at five PM. TPD will be there, and then we also will be working hard, cooking a nice event for the veterans to enjoy. It's usually good weather. Hopefully, it'll be a nice night. The end of this month, we're gonna have a cop-for-a-cone event. Again, it's another event that people look forward to. It's gained some traction over the years and it's gotten very, very popular. We're gonna settle on a date at the end of June, so we'll put out something on social media for the date for everyone to look forward to. Next up, the graduation prom season is upon us. I'd like to congratulate all the graduates from the local schools, Tocco, Eastchester, and all the colleges, of everyone coming home. Our goal is to always ensure safety at any of these events or the parties that are afterwards. We hope that, we hope that the parents promote a sober and fun event. We will be out there checking and also working with the county police. They have a special unit as well for prom night. If you're a parent of a student going to a prom, just triple-check everything, and we're on board with the school districts, but it's always best to have a second eye on it. Other than that, we hope to have a very happy summer here in the village. We'll be out and about on our bikes, community policing and speaking to the youths and doing whatever we can. We look forward to seeing everybody, have a happy and safe summer. Again, you'll see our bicycle patrol out, so stop and talk to them and say hello, ask any questions, and it's a great thing. On the crime aspect, just a reminder for everyone to lock their car doors. It's a very, very criminal trend right now going around of people entering cars. We, in the village, have a police force that circles around, patrols. We do active patrolling and we do active social media. We want to get the word out, lock your car doors. We've been able to keep this out of the village based on our patrolling aspects and just letting everybody know. But just keep in mind, lock your car doors, and deterrence is key. That's all we have for the report for tonight. Any questions from the board?
I have a question.
Sure.
So now that we've implemented the lower speeding limit, which I've had to tell my husband multiple times that we're now kind of over the speed limit, how has it been going?
It's been going good. So far, we haven't had an abundance in increase of speeding tickets. Twenty-five is a speed that's a little lower than thirty, obviously. Thirty, we always had complaints. I've noticed some complaints of speeding have decreased. So again, the word deterrence is key to it. When people see twenty-five, they say, let me really slow down. We've added some, two new speed signs in the area, so we do rotate the speed signs. Any other residents do notice an issue, please contact us right away. We will rotate your street into the speed sign alert list to put them on. Other than that, our traffic numbers are relatively the same, but we haven't received as many complaints for speeding. So I think the message is getting out there, just when you see twenty-five, let's make it really twenty-five. And even on the side streets, even less than that if you can, because some of these streets are very tight. There's a lot of kids playing outside now. So overall, we have a very safe village. We are out there enforcing vehicle and traffic laws as the residents see, but we want to also keep the car speed down. And it's, I think it's been a great move of lowering the speed limit to twenty-five.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Frank DiMarco, our superintendent of DPW. I wasn't sure if you were doing an additional report or not.
I forgot something. I just want to talk about some, summarize some of the projects that DPW are working on at this time of the year. So I'm gonna start with blacktopping roads. I mean, we just completed Columbus Avenue between Main and Circuit and Underhill from Cameron down to Columbus Avenue. We're looking at some other roads that we're trying to fit into our budget, but I'm undetermined about that right now. But we are working on that. Sidewalk repairs, you know, we're doing sidewalk repairs on Marble Dale Road and Fisher Avenue intersection there. I've been getting a lot of complaints about what is going on there and why the sidewalks look a lot different than they were. So what we did is we just added some radiuses to those intersections just to be more handicap-friendly. They are a little bigger, they're a little wider, they're just more handicap-accessible. So I just wanted to make that specifically appear because we're trying to do as much as we can to make all these intersections handicap-accessible, where a lot of them really aren't. So it gives us the opportunity to get in there, do it right this time. Our next intersection will be Cameron and Main, you know, so we're gonna be also working into that intersection as well. And we have much more, you know. We have some work that needs to be done on Thompson Street. We have some work that needs to be done, sidewalk work also at the Crestwood Train Station. And all of this has mainly had started because of all the signal changes that the police department has been working with, and it allowed us to get in and redo a lot of our sidewalks. Other projects we're working on is the Circuit Avenue Playground. I mean, I don't know if anybody has seen the playground before, but the rubber safety material has just eroded away. It was a danger situation, and it was the worst playground surface out of all the parks. So David and I had decided to redo all that surface and make it safe for all the children. With that said, we're also going around to all the parks and changing over to change the seats and just making sure that all of that is also safe for the children that are playing in those parks. We also are gonna go around and also sanitize, pressure wash, steam pressure wash, all the equipment that are in the playgrounds as well. We are, the hanging baskets, I mean, we had a hundred and fifty hanging baskets. Come on, Beautification Committee, they did a great job. I mean, that's- We have to give kudos to the Beautification Committee. And you know what? They need funding. They want to keep this up every year. They're working their hardest. So kudos to them, and it's my pleasure hanging those baskets up every year. I know my men enjoy it as well. But without those baskets, the streets will look so bare. So it's really a beautiful sight to see.
I watch them watering them every morning.
Every day, every day. Midland Place, we're also working on Midland Place. I don't know if anybody's known over the years, but by VFW, there's always been sewer backups. There's always been issues there. So David and I are working with CDBG funding, and we do have funding to take care of that sewer correction. It's, there are dips in the sewer line, so we're looking to straighten it out all out and correct it so there's never an issue again. And finally, Instagram. I don't know if anybody ever looks at Tocco DPW Instagram, but it's pretty informative. And, you know, I highly recommend that everybody gets on Tocco DPW. We give you our monthly pickups. We give you our holiday weeks. We give you, we are as informative as we can possibly be. So please, everybody sign up at Tocco DPW Instagram. And that's all I have.
Thanks a lot, Frank.
Okay.
Good information. May I have Elaine come forward for the library report? Swadish is not here today.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
So I'm very excited about Juneteenth because I'm also going to be attending, and I'm reading as well. We'll have a special story time, so I'll see you there. Few things that are going on at the library. We have our summer reading kickoff's are coming up. So we have the bubble bus is coming back for the children. Kara, I know you're gonna want to come to that again, right? I see her smiling. That's Tuesday, June twenty- It's Tuesday, June twentieth at four P.M., and that's for all ages, but especially for zero to ten, they're really going to enjoy that. And then we have in-person kids' Father's Day craft on Tuesday, June thirteenth at four P.M. We have ukulele basics for kids on June fifteenth at four P.M. and June twenty-seventh at four P.M. In-person pre-k yoga is Thursday, June fifteenth and twenty-ninth. And then Circuit Avenue Park is ready for our first Storytime in the Park tomorrow, we're so excited! So please join us tomorrow at eleven A.M. for Storytime in the Park for our kickoff. Thank you, Frank, and to everybody at the DPW. And we have a special Storytime in the Park on Tuesday, June twentieth. Donnie Dew will be joining us with her puppets for that program. For the kids, we have teen summer reading kickoff, pizza party, and trivia, that's Wednesday, June seventh at five P.M. Ages eleven to seventeen, so bring a beach chair and relax in our reading garden, hear about our great teen summer events while you enjoy pizza, trivia fun with friends, and we'll have prizes and giveaways, so you don't want to miss that. We also have for teens Maker Mondays that we're doing, we're continuing that, we have Monday, June twelfth and twenty-sixth. We have this big cart of stuff that you can come and create. We have some things that are just out of the box, and then things you could just let your imagination run wild. So that's three-thirty to five, June twelfth and twenty-sixth, ages eleven to seventeen. And of course, our teen D and D, we've got that tomorrow at three-thirty, and also Friday, June ninth at three-thirty. For adults, summer reading kickoff, concert with Karina Bartra Quartet, Monday, June twelfth at seven P.M. It's a concert with Afro-Peruvian fusion band headed by singer Karina Bartra. And then we have Dr. Renee Howell is going to be coming and doing a hybrid program, Juneteenth Program. Don't Know Much Biology, How Science Looks at Race Versus Inherited Genetics with Dr. Renee Howell on Monday, June twenty-sixth at six-thirty P.M. Followed by Wednesday, June twenty-eighth at six-thirty P.M. Richard Forliano, the Eastchester Town Historian, will be doing a program, Atucko History of African-Americans from Colonial Times to Martin Luther King's March on Washington. And then we have continued Mahjong on Tuesdays at one, Fridays at one. English as a Second Language, Wednesdays at ten forty-five, you can check the calendar for that. We have our Hybrid Book Club, Curious Charms of Arthur Pepper on Wednesday, June fourteenth at six-thirty. And our speculative short science fiction short story online discussion group, June thirteenth at seven P.M. And our ongoing exercise Tai Chi on Fridays at ten, Gentle Chair Yoga Wednesdays at nine, and Meditation Breathwork Thursdays at twelve, and you can check the dates on the calendar. And Senior Strength Training Monday at five fifteen. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Elaine.
And I did want to just make one more mention for thanking, you know, all the graduates and the wonderful baseball team. We want to thank our intern, Giancarlo Marcocca, who was, he's finishing up tomorrow, I know that we've had many interns that are helping us out. It's so wonderful to have these students helping us, and just such a bonus, and we're just so grateful, and congratulate them as they, they go on to the next steps. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Camille, do you have anything? Oh, it's not good news. Okay. David?
In particular, if you have any questions, let me know, but just to reiterate what Camille said, I just didn't know if, she's not on mic, but taxes are due June thirtieth. Bills have been mailed out, so if you haven't seen them, you'll see them soon.
Okay. David, I'm Gary, do you have anything? Nothing? John, do you have anything you'd like to share? Okay, so then we will go to the Board of Trustees reports. I will mention that our next Village Board meeting will be on July tenth at seven P.M., so we hope to see you here, and we'll start with Trustee Engelbert's report.
Awesome, thank you very much. Okay, so there's been a couple of changes, which our mayor will kind of go over in terms of liaison stuff, so I'm going to do my new liaison kind of one. So Eastchester Union Free School District, so the arts are thriving in Eastchester coming off this weekend. There was the We Are Eastchester Block Party celebrating the diversity and in our community. I particularly personally really enjoyed the middle school kind of art fair. If you don't believe that art is important for kids, it's, it's right there in these type, type of events, as well as the international tables, Taiwan, Czech Republic, it was, it was really truly amazing. I also want to give a shout-out to all the musicians in our district who are having their concerts kind of in this next week, this week and next week, across the elementary school, the middle school, and the high school. Lots of hours of practice, lots of hours of parents nagging kids to practice, but all for a good, a good outcome. The next school board meeting is tomorrow, it's a work session, the regular school board is the twentieth. If you live in Eastchester schools, write it on your calendar and think about attending. It starts at seven-thirty, and it's in the Eastchester High School Library. Tuckahoe Public Library, our first outdoor book fair or book sale, I guess, was held on Saturday. Do keep an eye out for future dates and great deals on superbooks that you can take home in a bag, kind of even, kind of no, no less. I know Elaine talked about the summer reading kickoff, the seventh for teens, the twelfth for adults, the twentieth for the kiddies with the, with the bubble bus. But building great reading skills is probably one of the single most important things we can help, kind of our young people do. I mean, no matter what is happening kind of in their, in their lives, in the world, they can always just open up a book and be transported kind of somewhere else. So do think about kind of heading down to one of these kickoffs, kind of even as adults who think we read well, we can go and kind of hone those skills and learn some more. Do join the friends, the library does everything for us, we can do just a little bit more kind of for our good library. The Tuckahoe Environmental and Sustainability Committee, my reassignment just started to this group, but I couldn't be more excited kind of about it. As a leaf composter, pollinator, gardener, single-use avoiding, electric car-driving trustee, this is just my kind of, kind of assignment, thank you, Mayor, kind of a dandy note. The Tuckahoe Community Center, here's a trivia question, how many birthdays and graduation parties are scheduled for June at the community center? Anyone? Anyone? Nine, which is absolutely crazy. It's actually the best birthday party in town, nine, can you believe that? Amazing. And primary elections will be held at the community center on June twenty-seventh from six A.M. to nine P.M. If you are eligible to vote in this election, make a plan, keep the plan, and vote. It really is the very least and the very most important thing you can do for democracy in our country. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Engelbert. Here she goes.
The Eastchester Community Action Partnership. Since the beginning of January twenty-twenty-three, thirty-three new families have registered for the food pantry. Fifteen were seniors. With the reduction of food stamps benefits, families, especially seniors who are living on fixed incomes, are finding it harder to make ends meet. Ecap has a second monthly food distribution for seniors to meet the rising need. Ecap is currently recruiting for the following. The Students for Summer Camp. Students for Summer Employment Program, where employers can hire youth during the summer for twenty hours a week. Ecap will pay the students through a Westchester County grant. So basically, the business, local businesses can hire youth, and Ecap will pay them. They can work up to twenty hours a week. June twenty-first, the distribution of cleaning supplies to the families that's registered with Ecap. So every so often, they have a special distribution for all kinds of cleaning supplies for your home, and that will be on June twenty-first. So anyone who wants to participate in these programs can call or would like to donate or volunteer for Ecap, can call the area director Denise Chin at nine-one-four-three-three-seven-seven-seven-six-eight. Now, I would like to address something that Samantha had mentioned earlier when she was talking about the Juneteenth. I am a Christian, I do believe in God, and I do not believe that Christianity or any other forms of religion are forms of mental slavery. Yes, there was mental slavery, forms of mental slavery besides just the physical, but I do not believe that that's why religions were formed. Samantha, I know that may be your opinion, but I don't think that is the opinion of the Juneteenth Committee, I am a committee member, and I don't think that's the opinion of most people that attend the Juneteenth Program. It's okay, it's okay, that's your belief, but it's not mine, so it's okay.
Please don't speak out.
It's okay. I, I am not saying this to go back and forth, I don't even, I don't want to go back and forth. It was a comment made, and I disagree with it, and I could not sit here as a trustee and a Christian and someone who believes in God and not respond. That's all this is, so, thank you.
Trustee Gachion?
Thank you. The month of May was certainly a civic engagement and social involvement month. Many events in the town and villages were held to remember our fallen heroes, our military veterans who gave their life in service. There was the Hall of Membrance in the community center. Deputy Mayor, you did a great job organizing that, thanks for letting us ride your coattails. VFW Post two-two-eight-five and American Legion Post nine-seven-nine held their event at the Eastchester High School, which went very well. Bronxville and Tuckahoe Schools, as they always do, showed out and showed up to honor our veterans and those, those who lost their lives as well. And the one thing I'll say is that the town and the villages always do such a great job, whether it's with the parades or with the information sessions to honor our veterans, and especially those who are fallen around Memorial Day. So thank you, thank you to everyone who came out, and thank you to everyone who supported. On May twenty-fourth, and we're going to scoot over to Historic Preservation, on May twenty-fourth, the Historic Preservation Commission, if you were here, I know a couple of you were, it was standing room only. They held a meeting primarily discussing the property located at two-thirty White Plains Road, and the public comment hearing is still open. Right, John? That's perfect, good, so you can look on their site for that. History Committee, Ms. Elaine, I'm sorry, I owe you guys a report, Trustee Engelbert gave that to me, and I don't have it with me. So I owe that report, but I am excited, because my office hours are going to be when the History Committee is meeting, so I'll be able to kind of join in on some of that. One thing before I go, one of our friends and our, one of our grand marshals in the Eastchester-Tuckahoe Parade, Mr. Anthony Rabosco, Korean War veteran, he had a slip and fall on the day of the parade. A few broken bones, nothing too, too major, he is, he is scheduled to make a full recovery, just going through some rehabilitation, but please, if you're, if you're someone who prays or someone who sends good vibes, think of Mr. Rabosco while you're doing that. That's all I have, Mayor. Oh, I'm sorry, one more thing. And I will be meeting with the folks from the Beautification Committee tomorrow.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Cronin?
Hello, everybody. Just so we're all clear, this, unlike what Bing Crosby said, is the most wonderful time of the year, so happy June! And I just want to reiterate how lovely the two parades that we marched in were, and I want to thank the Village of Bronxville for inviting us and the veterans here in Eastchester and Tuckahoe for the return of the Eastchester-Tuckahoe Memorial Day Parade. It was, it was really something to behold. I also want to thank the Police Department for a wonderful memorial service, you know, celebrating things like this are, are important to remember the people who, who work so hard to uphold the, the wonder of this community, so thank you. The Tuckahoe seniors will be going on their trip to Mystic Seaport tomorrow, and I believe that they will be having a lunch hosted by the Tuckahoe Police Department on the twenty-second, so if anybody is interested in joining them for that lunch, they must sign up with Lisa Jones by the fifteenth. The Tuckahoe seniors are mourning the loss of Joan Tyroller, who passed away last month at the age of ninety-two. She is really missed by many of the women at the senior center, and we send our condolences to the family. Also, last month, we lost William Weigleman, a longtime Tuckahoe resident and Korean War veteran, and happens to be the husband of Marge Weigleman, who worked for the village and the library for a long time, so we send our condolences to that family as well, and thank you for all their service. From the Zoning and Planning Board, the next zoning board meeting is next Wednesday, June fourteenth. On the agenda is a return of three-seventy-seven Marble Dale Road for the construction of two new one-family homes seeking height variances. This has been a high-interest proposal, and residents interested in voicing their opinions have an opportunity as the public hearing remains open. Also on the agenda is eighty-two Lake Avenue seeking a parking variance, twenty Marble Dale Road looking to expand an existing business, and fifty Columbus Avenue, which is looking to add a small cell tower to the building, is that right?
Yeah, some more cell sites over there.
Cell site, okay.
There's a whole bunch up there already, I think they're going to add three new ones.
Okay, thank you. The last three are, those last three are also on the planning board agenda for June twentieth. So as everyone has noted, Juneteenth is being celebrated in the village on the seventeenth, please come out and support. It's, it's a really good opportunity, it's really educational, there's a lot going on this year, this is an even more improved Juneteenth celebration. The committee has worked really hard to bring in people to, to work with arts and crafts for the kids, there are all kinds of kids' activities, they're playing, they're teaching children to play chess, there'll be dancing, there'll be drumming, there'll be speeches, there'll be talks, and there will be incredible food, so please do come out, and they will be there from twelve to six. It is quite the celebration, and it is free fun for the whole family, so please try to make it out there. Like Trustee Gachion mentioned, the, the committee just received five-oh-one-C-three status from the IRS, so all of your donations are now tax, tax-deductible, thank you. And so if you go on the village website or any of our social media pages, you will see a QR scanning code where you can donate, there's also information about the website, you can donate that way. So please do consider making a donation, because this is our one, like, this is our big event of the year, but we also spend a lot of time for Black History Month, doing all kinds of educational programs in the village, and all of that does take money and resources. So it is summer, right, and our first movie night is going to be on June thirtieth, and we will be seeing Super Mario Brothers. So this is another fun, free activity for the whole family, that movie is really well, really well-regarded, I'm excited. We're, we're going to have some fun, there'll be, you know, there'll be some snacks and refreshments, so come on out and bring the whole family with you. I have to check what time sundown is, but I imagine the movie is probably going to start around eight o'clock. Okay, I also want to just say, because everyone is mentioning their interns, I really want to say a quick thank you to Ella Bordwell and Caitlin Potchakol, who are my interns this year. They have been working with me in, on the Tuckahoe Oral History Project, which is something that's been a long, ongoing project for me, and we've been interviewing some of Tuckahoe's longtime residents. So I just want to say thank you and congratulations to them, as they will be both moving on. Caitlin is going to University of Buffalo, and Ella, I, I forget where she's going, but she, they're both incredible young women, so thank you to them, and that's it.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And while we're on the subject of interns, my intern, Kevin Denage, I want to say thank you to him. He called me and was very persistent, because I didn't respond right away, and he insisted that he be my intern and that I consider no one else. And I like, I like that kind of an assertive proclamation to be made, and he has proven to be such a big help to me. He's interested in marketing and PR, your favorite, and he wanted to help with my social media, and he's forced me to do videos even while I was on vacation, so thank you to Kevin for your help on just keeping up, keeping the, the village and the residents up with what I'm doing and what's going on. But also, I got a, some information from Connie and the clerk in the court's office, and she said they had four... they had four interns who were just absolutely fantastic, who helped with a large project digitizing the old court records. And the interns' names were Karen, Daliana, Olivia, and Olivia. So there were two Olivias, and so I want to thank them on behalf of Connie, the court, and the entire village. Thank you to all the interns who really do add value to the work that we do here. We appreciate them. I also want to congratulate those and thank those who participated in the parking amnesty program. If you were on social media, you probably saw videos from, you know, most of the board encouraging people to come out. I did ask Connie in the court office if there was a bit of a surge, and she said on the last day, yes, there were a lot of people coming to try to get their 50% off on their tickets. So I hope a lot of people were able to benefit from that, and I'd be looking forward to looking at what the numbers are when we get them put together. I also officiated a wedding on May 30th, and that was an exciting wedding. Congratulations to Neover, Melendez, and Emil Torres on their now newlyweds. They contacted me and asked if I would do a small wedding here, and they told me that they loved R&B music, and they liked the Atlantic Star Group, who sings the song "Always." And I just happened to be friendly with one of them, and so I called and said, hey, would you come do this for a couple? And they're just so humble and so down-to-earth, they said yes, and came down. So it was a really magical day for the couple and for myself, and Deputy Mayor Cronin was the videographer and the photographer for them. So congratulations to the couple, who was extremely happy. I just do want to update everyone, and you can find this information on our website, but we do have board liaisons, board liaison assignments for the entire board. So the board's members are responsible for either different committees or different parts of activities in the village. So I want to let you know what they are, and if you forget, you can just go on our website and look us up. But we have the Planning Board, Zoning Board, Sign and Awning Board, Seniors Program, and Special Events is Deputy Mayor Cronin, the incomparable Deputy Mayor Cronin. We also have, Trustee Engelbert is liaison for the community center, the Eastchester Schools, Library, and the Tuckahoe Environmental and Sustainability Committee, which is great, because that's her, that's her love. She likes the environment, and they make sure, especially her husband, he likes the environment even more. And then the History Committee, Historic Preservation Commission, the Beautification Committee, and the veterans will be, the liaison will be Trustee Gachion, and Trustee Taylor will continue to be the liaison for the ECAP, Tuckahoe Housing Authority, and the Chamber of Commerce. So I just want to personally thank the board for their continued work throughout the year. They have other jobs, most of them, and yet they still dedicate their time to serving this community at a very nominal fee. And there were a few people who emailed me and asked me what the board makes. The mayor's salary is around, salary is, I'm like air quotes, is $7,200, and the trustees make a little more than $5,000, right? So just to give you an idea, this is supposed to be a part-time job, but it really isn't. We dedicate so much of our time to the community, and often, you know, we make, I say we make $5,000 and we give back 10. So you know what that's about, right, Anthony Laurie? So thank you to the board. I want to publicly just acknowledge the hard work that this board does. And that's the last thing, but I do, I do want to go back to the Juneteenth Committee, because I know that Samantha's intentions were really to try to educate the community and not to offend anyone. But I want to be careful that sometimes when we give information out of context and not in a broader, you know, in a broader context, people can misunderstand what we're saying and can be offended. And I want for people to be clear that the Juneteenth Committee was really established to give, to provide people with education, but also to bring the community together. So there is truth in the fact that all religions have been used by people, by human beings, to oppress others. That's a fact. But that doesn't mean that a person's faith is oppressing them or, you know, mentally enslaving them. So I want to make sure that people don't get offended and then not show up to Juneteenth, because they're Christian and they feel, well, if they don't, they don't think that my religion or my faith matters, then why should I go? So I want to encourage everyone to come out and learn what Juneteenth is about. Learn, you know, here, bring your children, and let Elaine Provenzano, our children's librarian, read the stories, because I think it's through the stories, and I've mentioned this before, the stories to me really solidify in our minds our history and the experiences of humankind. So I just want to encourage everyone to come out on June 17th at noon, and just the community does come together at Main Street Park. Okay, so this brings us to the final opportunity to address the board on anything, agenda items or not.
Good evening, folks. Anthony Laurie's my name. There's a few things I want to mention. I know there's political things coming up for November, and there's sports coming, the Youth Association and all that. But please, if someone doesn't know it, there's no signs to be put on memorials. Any memorial is sacred grounds. This morning, I had to remove the signs in front of Samuel Crawford Monument. I don't remember if they were SACA or Tuckahoe Youth Association, but there's no type of sign of anything to be put on any memorial. I've removed them many a times, even down by the World War I Monument. People put car wash signs, they're washing their roofs. But our local people should know that there's no signs to be put up on any memorial, whether it's a war memorial, fireman's memorial, or any kind of memorial. Please. Second of all, we're talking about safety, and one thing I hate is fires. And I've noticed quite a bit, and I mentioned it while I'm on the board meetings, people have a very strong habit, even gardeners do it, I'm not condemning gardeners, but they pile their trash, whether it's in bags or even their garbage, on Mondays and Fridays. Where do they put them? Right against the fire hydrant. And let me tell the public here now, God forbid if we have a fire, if it takes one minute or a half a minute for the fireman to move that garbage or the trash away from the fire hydrant, that's delayed time of putting water on the fire, because the man has to connect to the hydrant, to the engine, to pump that water. Please. I've seen it. Last Friday, on one of the streets, coming down Waller Street, you couldn't even see the hydrant. All the people put their garbage there. So one person puts it there, the rest of the people put it there. One man puts his leave bag out there, everybody puts their leave bag. I'm just, I've mentioned it quite a few times while I was on the board meeting. This is a very serious matter. I've seen many times, and especially at night sometimes, if you get a very cold night in the winter months, and there's trash put around there for the DPW to pick it up, keep it two, three feet away from there. It's not going to hurt that. But everyone has the habit to put it right against the fire hydrant, and that's the safest place to do it. We'll block the fire hydrant. We're not going to have a fire tonight or tomorrow. But I'm just trying to tell you, safety, please. I don't think Frank's men mind picking up two feet away from the hydrant. Believe me, it's happened. Many a times it happened. And the last thing I want to say, I couldn't attend the last zoning board meeting, but I had an opinion about something, and I wrote a letter, because I couldn't go to the meeting. And my letter was not read. So in other words, whatever Anthony had to say is no good, because it wasn't even mentioned. I thought that, I thought, really, that whether my opinion mattered or not, that letter would be read. But the chairman of the zoning board, I watched it on TV, did not read my letter.
Okay. Gary, you want to?
Yeah, I think they did acknowledge the letter and made it part of the record. They said that...
They made it part of the record, Gary, but that should have been read. That was my opinion on the matter. I just thought that even though I couldn't attend, whether it passed or not, that could have been read.
Anthony, with these letters that come in, I think we had 20-some-odd letters for one of the projects down there. They can't read them all, but they make them part of the record, so people can view them. They're going to be...
Okay, I could understand that, Gary, but in other words, it's like I didn't have an opinion.
I agree with that, but that's...
Okay.
They had acknowledged that they, I know they all read it, and they acknowledged it.
Okay. But I, just my opinion, I thought it should have been read. Thank you.
Yeah, and if there are 20 letters, you know, they get a lot of letters, it is difficult then to process that. But it's a part of the record. I do want to ask if maybe Frank and if the DPW and the Police Department, if you guys could also keep an eye out for those signs that are put out on the memorials, maybe just ask your teams to, if they see them, to remove them, you know, just during the course of their regular work, not to go out of their way necessarily, but maybe that would help.
Just to mention that we have been. We have been circling. We've been meeting with Tony, who's been telling us as well. So we have been placing some warning stickers on front doors, just warning people that, you know, please keep them away from hydrants. They're also putting them out early in the week. So when we pick them up on a Thursday, they're out on a Saturday and Sunday. So it also makes our village look horrible. So we are working on that.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to address the board on anything? Okay. Can you put a mic over there or something? Who is it? Suzanne, can you unmute? Okay, we hear you.
I have actually four questions, but I'll spare you, and I will only ask you two. Who is responsible for sidewalk fixing?
That's what Frank DeMarco just talked about, that they've been working on the sidewalks.
Yes, because corner of Oakland and Fisher is a very dangerous sidewalk. It has pigs and, you know, missing pieces, and you can really break a leg, and it's really to be addressed that somebody does something about it.
Okay. Can you hold on, Suzanne? Frank DeMarco's coming to the mic. And also, I just want to, as before Frank speaks, I want to encourage residents, if you see these things happen as they happen, contact DPW. If you're not sure, contact the Police Department, and they'll direct you, so that we could try to get things resolved and not have them come to the meeting.
They're good buddies of mine, I can call them. Mr. John there is wonderful.
Okay. Frank?
To answer your question, the public right away is the village's responsibility. But residential sidewalks are unfortunately the responsibility of the homeowner.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Yeah, but if you do see a sidewalk that's in disrepair, dangerous, hazardous, you know, please call me, because I send out numerous letters every month, just asking people to repair their sidewalks. I do take photos. I give them a timeframe. I also ask that they file a permit. That will cost them nothing. I'm trying to make it as easy as possible, but I'm really trying to make our sidewalks in the village much more safer. So please, you won't be the first person to tell me that there's a dangerous sidewalk. Always feel free to give me a call.
And your name is?
Frank DeMarco.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Okay.
And the other question is, are there any plans that Tuckahoe Village, as Eastchester does, that one can pay taxes online?
We're not quite there, Suzanne, but, you know, point well taken. We have been, we have been talking about it.
I don't want to be a nudge, but it would help a lot.
Yep, it sure would.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm bothered you was electric floors.
Say again?
Electric floors.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Give me anything if you already have been to the place. Just with the block party, just to let the fire department know and evac know that the streets are going to be closed. That's it, just in case you have to get down there.
Thank you.
Start of each of the block parties or any type of road closure, including construction, we always contact 60 Control, which is the dispatch center for fire EMS. So we let them know the route is going to be closed, and they take alternate routes.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board on anything? Okay. So that being said, we will see you on July 7th, Tuckahoe. Have a good night. This meeting is adjourned. July 10th, sorry. Not July 7th. I'm a little off today.